We're ready to bring the meeting to order. Please silence your cell phones. And this is the meeting of January 27th, the city council meeting. Are you ready to start the transcript?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Let me take a roll call. Jerry DiTullio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Tim Fitzgerald.
George Pond.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
And Genevieve Wooden.
The minutes were pre-distributed, and if there are any changes to the minutes? Anyone from council have a change in the minutes?
I move to approve.
Moved to approve?
As submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
No discussion? Please poll council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Moving to proclamations and ceremonies, so do we have anything tonight? Doesn't appear to be any. Let's move right on to citizens' right to speak. And citizens who wish may speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster. Citizens who wish to speak on agenda items, please sign the general agenda roster or appropriate public hearing roster before the item is called to be heard. If you're here to speak, please give your name, address, spell your last name for the
Mike Stites, S-T-I-T-E-S.
And your address?
11885 West 35th Avenue.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You know, almost on a weekly basis, Jerry Neilon stands up here with a group of 2020 people and exhorts how good 38th Avenue is and particular things, but I'd like to tell you tonight, the practical other side of 38th Avenue, the side that we have to deal with every day. One, it's a big road hazard. You can't turn left. You have to sneak way out there, which makes it a hazard to see left. You can't turn right. Traffic backs up for no reason during the day. Sometimes there's no traffic at all. But it's an inconvenience to the city and to the residents of District 1 and 2 especially. It has seriously impacted our business because people don't drive it. And our business is down and several are, but I won't address them, I'll address our business. It has seriously impacted our business. Now, I understand that there's a project coming in at 38th and Wadsworth, which is going to bring in a lot of traffic. Do you really want to constrict 38th Avenue? Is that going to hurt their business too by restricting 38th Avenue? You know, I spoke several times. You have two 38ths. You got a new one, you have an old one. From Harlan East, you have a new one where the city owns the light poles. You can decorate them, you can put lights on them. West, Public Service owns them. I asked several months before I left office, can we buy those poles? Can Public Service, did they ever finish the study to see if you can attach anything to the poles? You know, years ago, it looked, we used to put flags on them. We had 206 flags, and it looked fantastic down 38th, but we can't do that anymore because Public Service will not let you attach anything to one of their poles. You know, the seniors that are all up and down the street, they're afraid to drive it. They are absolutely afraid to drive it. So I would seriously think and hope that you will really take a look at 8th Avenue and really reconsider what you're trying to do there. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Wilson, I see, has signed up.
May I speak from the study session?
Right.
I'm Kathy Tolman, T-O-L-M-A-N, at 4735 Reed Street. And I just wanted to voice my concern about the lack of transparency regarding the infrastructure changes on 38th Avenue and the related costs. People need to know what the plans are and have the opportunity to voice their opinions. So I hope that this is scheduled as well as a vote on the expenditures that will be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have Vivian Voss here.
This is not on the agenda, right?
Right.
Vivian Voss, V is in Victor, O, S is in Sam, 1S, 6920 West 47th Place. I'd like to address the budget and the fact that the December-January Gazette headlines with "Storm Clouds Ahead for 2015 Wheat Ridge Budget?" And part of it mentioned the maintenance on the roads, and I think that is such an important part of what goes on in any city, town. How silly Wheat Ridge roads when they don't get their potholes fixed, when the striping is not there, even in nights like tonight where you cannot see which lane you're in. And the sweeping that goes on. And I would rather see not money spent needlessly on some other issue that the Wheat Ridge Council thinks that they need to bring to the public, but that priorities be set. And when I call in a complaint to the city for whatever road and whatever jurisdiction that city has, I don't want to be told it's CDOT's problem. I don't want to be told it's Lakeside's problem or any other city's problem. If I call in, I would suggest that whoever answers the phone, then they take my complaint and they pass it on to the appropriate authorities. I don't need to be shuttling around finding phone numbers and trying to figure out who cleans, sweeps, fixes potholes, accident reports on what road. So, let's get a handle on the budget. I would challenge you for that, whether it's this year, 2014. I understand that's already kind of a done deal, but let's look forward to 2015 and spend my money wisely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, how many minutes do we get for the general agenda? Because it wasn't listed on the, on the agenda.
Three minutes is usual.
Always three. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Okay, looking at the agenda, do we have, is the agenda correct as it has, as it's written, or do we need to have any changes to it? We do have one item. We're changing the wording on item number two, which, item number three, excuse me, which is read as Council Bill Number 08, et cetera. That will actually be Resolution Number 08, et cetera. Does everybody have that? Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a kind of a shortening up of several items in one, just to be a more efficient system for reading. Mr. DiTullio, will you read that into the record for us?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to introduce the consent agenda. Item 1A is Resolution 01-2014, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and Jefferson County School District R1 for school resource officer services. Item 1B is a motion to renew a memorandum of agreement with the Caroll Department of Employment, Division of Oil and Public Safety, concerning regulation of conveyances by local jurisdictions. And item 1C is a motion to approve the annual renewal of the computer-aided dispatch and records management system in the amount of $84,555 payable to Logistics Systems Incorporated. Is the motion in order?
Motion is.
I move to approve items 1A, B, and C.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on those? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, let's move on to item 2, which is under Public Hearings and Ordinances on Second Reading. Resolution Number 092014. It's not a public hearing.
It is a public hearing.
It's not listed as such, but...
Yours isn't, but mine is. Oh, really?
Yeah, mine is not. That's okay, let's go ahead, let's open the public hearing then. Mr., oh, Ms. Davis, please read that for us.
Thank you. Resolution Number 09-2014, a resolution approving a first amendment to the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan to allow further utilization of tax increment financing. At issue renewal, Wheat Ridge received a tax increment financing agreement application from MVG Development for the redevelopment of a commercial property at the southwest corner of Kipling Street and 38th. The proposed project is located in I-70, at I-70 and Kipling, in the, wait, sorry, in the I-70 Kipling Corridor's urban renewal plan project area. The plan authorizes renewal Wheat Ridge to use TIF, but utilization for a particular project was not adopted. This amendment adopts the utilization of TIF only for the MVG redevelopment area. I also wanted to give a little background on the proposed project, and I'm sure there's going to be some staff reports, but I'll highlight some of this in here because I think it's an exciting project that's going on in Wheat Ridge. The proposed project, as the master developer of the site, MVG, intends to demolish all existing blighted structures that it acquires, install new public improvements, drainage, sidewalks, landscaping, et cetera, and bury the above-ground utilities. Construct a new mixed-use development, including retail and a senior housing facility on the 6.3 acre site. MVG proposes construction of a 27,000-square-foot retail grocery store to be occupied by Sprouts, Farmers Market. Starbucks/Cost Cutters may continue to operate in their current facilities. However, Starbucks has expressed an interest in a new store with a drive-in to generate higher sales. One additional retail pad will be made available and is expected to be occupied by a quick-service restaurant. The senior housing component will consist of a 64-unit assisted living and memory care facility and will be located in the northwestern portion of the site where the current strip exists today. It's just a little background that I wanted to give.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready for staff presentation as well as any presentees. I just want to swear you all in, as well as any public who will be speaking on this. If you are going to be speaking on this item, please stand. We just have you, Steve? Nope. We do have, you are going to be speaking on this as well?
I just have a comment.
That's fine. Please stand so I can swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, so help you God? If so, answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, member of Mayor's City Council. My name is Steve Art. I'm the Economic Development and Urban Renewal Manager for the city. I think council member Davis did a fantastic job of introducing this, so just quickly kind of give you some other points that you may want to note and to give the audience and home viewers some background on this project. We have been working on this project, well, I've been here three years, and I'm certainly sure the city manager has been working on this project a lot longer than three years. So we want everyone to know that development projects do not happen overnight or in a vacuum. We've been working on this for quite a few years, trying to make those relationships, and this project comes to fruition, and we're very close to making that occur tonight. To give you some background, the council did approve an urban renewal plan in May of 2009. But at that time, when they enacted the plan, which allowed them to have provisions for sales tax and property tax increment financing, they did not enact any of those on the plan, which is why we're before you tonight, asking for this first modification to the plan. It's considered a substantial modification to the plan because tonight, we are going to be asking you to allow us to enact tax increment financing upon this project and this project only in the entire I-70 Kipling Corridor's urban renewal plan. If you do pass this tonight, staff has been working with MVG Development on a negotiated tax increment finance agreement. We're not here to present that to you tonight, just to ask you to allow us to enter to those and to allow us to use tax increment financing in the future. Some background on the site. The site in 1937 is really agricultural use, and then in about 1941, the first buildings were built on that site, and that's really the building that's located behind the current Starbucks. That happened in 1940, 1961, excuse me, is when that was done. Then in 19, excuse me, that was 19, in the 1940s. Then in 1961, the larger building that now houses the Family Thrift Shop was built, and that was the site of the original Safeway store in the city of Wheat Ridge. Then in the 1970s, about 1974, the additional buildings, the large tilted-up concrete building where Clancy's is located currently right now, and then the other building where Starbucks and Cost Cutters were built in the 1970s. And that's how the site sat until today. For the last 40 years, as you well know and I hear from the community often, that that site has fallen under some great disrepair. In fact, it is under code enforcement right now. We've been staying off the wolves right now. If you drive through that parking lot, there's a lot of potholes in the parking lot. The landscaping in the parking lot consists of the weeds that want to grow up through those potholes in there. There really isn't any drainage on the site right now, so every time it rains, those buildings to the north, such as Clancy's, Cost Cutters, do get some drainage problems in those buildings right now. The awnings are bad on the buildings, so there's a lot of code enforcement, but we hope this redevelopment will solve that. Ms. Davis went through what was, what is proposed on the site there. Just to let you know that the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan allows us to have objectives as to reduce and eliminate blight and to prevent the spread of blight, and we certainly feel the redevelopment of this property will eliminate blight, will create redevelopment opportunities in the surrounding areas from there. At the November 19, 2013, urban renewal meeting, members of MGB Development, which is Greg Moran, John Reinsma, and John Rankin, their CFO, came to the meeting and proposed this project to the Urban Renewal Board of Directors. The Urban Renewal Board at that time was, it was just almost like a study session, they weren't there to make any decisions. But upon hearing the development for this project authorized us to move ahead, to allow MVG to do a performer on their land, allowed us to then hire a third-party independent company to come in and review that performer for the need for TIF. So what happens to, has to happen tonight for us to proceed forward is, we need to approve this first amendment to the plan. Some of the steps that we went through to get this plan was to create first the amendment to the plan. That was done in November 2013, and it was reviewed by our legal counsel for renewal Wheat Ridge and was approved. We have to then submit this first amendment plan to the Planning Commission, which we did in December of 2013, to see that it conforms to the city's comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission unanimously voted that it did conform to the comprehensive plan for the city and approved a resolution that night to move it on forward. We then have to then provide a 30-day written notice to all the property owners, residences, businesses within the urban renewal plan area. We mailed out those mailings December 26 of 2013 before the 30-day notice is required. Because we are implementing TIF for the very first time, we also had to submit to the county not only our first amendment to the plan, but a county impact report. And this impact report speaks to how much increment will be diverted from the county and other taxing agencies that will be going to renew Wheat Ridge to remediate blight over the period of the TIF that will be enacted upon that. We submitted that to the county on December 26, within the 30-day period. We have not heard anything back from the county on that, so I'm assuming they have no objection to the implementation of TIF to remove blight on this property. We also had to post a public hearing notice in the paper, and that was done within the required time length. That was published on December 19 of 2013. If tonight you do approve TIF, we will continue negotiations with the developer. We will then, after we have negotiated that plan, we will go back to renewal Wheat Ridge with that plan that they will approve. We will also submit to the county the resolution and the notification of TIF on this property. I want to very much thank the Renewal Wheat Ridge Board, who over a month ago heard that Sprouts was coming in and was asked to keep that confidential, and they did for a few weeks until the developer was ready to release that name. We're very happy with MVG Development, who's here, and Mr. H. McNesh is here tonight. If you do have any questions on the development, but again, tonight, we're just approving TIF. We're not approving anything with a specific development. A lot of those aspects are still within the planning stages of MGB, MVG. Our executive director and city manager, Mr. Goff, is here tonight. With that, we would be happy to answer any questions that you have. You need to conduct a public hearing this evening, and then we would recommend that you approve the resolution. If I have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Before I call for public, additional public comment, are there any questions of Mr. Art?
Madam Chair.
Mr. DiTullio.
Steve, on some other projects we've done in the city with TIF, we, because this is going to be, has a residential component and also a commercial component, are you still looking at not affecting the Wheat Ridge Fire Department district funding?
I believe we would, we would, because it does, if it was solely a retail project, we'd probably recommend not to do it for the fire department. That's certainly a decision of the city council, but at this point, because it does have a residential, and we believe the fire department would probably make additional calls, it's a long-term care facility, that we've asked the development to exclude from their performer that portion that would flow to the fire districts.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Art?
Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Steve, with regard to the senior living facility, what kind of financing mechanism is being used for that project, or is it a straight private development, or is there any kind of financing involved with that?
A portion of the TIF will be used for the development of that site also. They, MVG will be doing all the infrastructure and public improvements on that project, so part of this TIF will be going toward that.
Mr. Starker?
Mr. Art, is there a, is there a time horizon for the TIF?
To implement the TIF?
No, for the, how long the TIF would be in place?
It'd be a 25-year TIF.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Art.
Thank you very much.
We're not open for public comment? Once again, just to keep it correct with the, with the correct item, could you give us your name, your last name, spell that, and your address?
Vivian Voss, V is in Victor, O, S is in Sam, that's 1S, 6920 West 47th Place. I am not against progress or betterment of Wheat Ridge, but I am concerned about tax increment financing. I've been involved with knowing what tax increment financing is, and I think it's a mystery probably to most residents. And if I remember correctly, you have a base that you start at, which would be soon around the time that you start the TIF. And then, as the gentleman stated, that would be for 25 years. So Sprouts, Walmarts, Starbucks, anybody that comes in under a TIF financing then has a set level that you can never exceed with any future sales tax revenue money that comes in. Thus, a lot of districts, fire districts, school districts, police departments are not getting their percentage portion of the normal revenue that would be coming in had it not been capped at your original starting date for the next 25 years. And that usually means that most cities then need to come to the citizens and ask for a tax increase in some way or another, so that now the funding of the police department, the funding of the fire districts, and the funding of the schools can be brought up to current levels, but under that tax increment financing, you've lost that ability without a call of the people. And so I would suggest that you seriously know what a tax increment financing is about from beginning to end and how it affects the citizens when you then make a call to us for more money because you don't have that ability to raise the funds with the cap that you've put on yourself and the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that relates to Mr. DiTullio's question, and Mr. Goff, would you like to elaborate on that?
Ms. Voss was correct that a TIF arrangement, a base is set for all taxing districts for the property tax. She did mention that, you know, it's going to impact the city specifically also, but the city's property tax middle levy is really small at 1.830, so it's not a, it's not a huge impact on the city for property tax. It's a huge impact for the city for the sales tax because this project, this property is currently underutilized and not producing amount of sales tax that it could. So the city will see a good, good increase in sales tax. A portion will be shared back over a certain period of time, not 25 years, to help pay for public improvements that are needed at the site. It's also hopefully true that redevelopments like this increase the property tax in the surrounding area, that the taxing districts that have a property tax middle levy will see those increases with no caps.
Are we ready for a motion?
We have to close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I need to close the public hearing.
Is there any more to speak?
Anybody else need to speak on this item? Closing the public hearing?
Motion in order?
A motion is in order?
I move to approve Resolution Number 09-2014, a resolution approving a first amendment to the I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan to allow for the utilization of tax increment financing.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
Madam Mayor, I will be supporting this tonight with the idea that the negotiations will include excluding the Wheat Ridge Fire Department. I think it's a good idea, especially since there'll be the 64 units, that's going to be assisted living. I'm sure the fire department will be making calls there. So that's the caveat that I have, is I hope that as they negotiate through this, that the fire department is excluded.
Further discussion?
I'd like to comment, Ms. Voss had some, some good points to consider, and I do think as a city council, there's something, you know, that we do need to look at. And I know in some of the other things that we've looked at, you know, we need to consider what type of increase in dollars this is bringing to our city. And I know, for instance, the Sprouts that's on the other side of Sheridan is one of the busiest Sprouts in, in the state, so it'll be nice to have a Sprouts close by to offload hopefully a lot of that volume. And, and I do think it is an asset to the community that'll improve the area, but I also do think that, you know, a portion of this will come back to the city for improvements and also into our, our general fund to help with city expenses. So I do hear and respect what you say, and I think we are careful in considering it.
Any further discussion?
I think it's important, and when looking at a TIF, is, is understanding while it's been reviewed and studied by an independent third party to indicate that a TIF is warranted for this project, that doesn't mean that we have to give away the farm. And I think as much as we may provide the opportunity for a TIF to be used, it should be used extremely sparingly because of that, the simple fact that we are giving away future revenue in order to make this happen today. And I... And I think that it is a valid concern that developers and retailers tend to utilize this form of financing almost as a go-to versus an option of last resort. So I want to make sure that while we are approving this TIF, that we use it as judiciously and as sparingly as possible, because we are in a situation where we're continuing to see reduced tax revenue in a variety of different ways, not just within the city of Wheat Ridge, but also across Jefferson County. So I think that that's something to be considered of as we go forward, so that's all I have to say.
Any additional?
So we're not actually approving an actual TIF, we're just saying that we are allowing the ability to have a TIF tonight. Okay. So we're not approving any actual TIF, saying how much we're going to give them, and so I, there's a clear distinction between that. We're not giving them money tonight, we're just saying that the ability to do that is now open to them where it wasn't before. So, and I do support this, because cost construction and a strong need to see that corner revitalized and bring more to the city would definitely be a benefit, so.
Is council ready for the question? Please vote.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, the item has been approved. Let's move down to item three, which is also a public hearing. George, Mr. Pond, would you please read this into the record?
Happy to. Resolution Number 08-2014, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plat with a right-of-way dedication for property zone residential one located at 9801 West 32nd Avenue. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a two-lot subdivision plat for property zone residential one and located at 9801 West 32nd Avenue. The purpose of this request is to create two lots, one for an existing home, and a second for development of a new single-family home to the north.
Looks like we have staff presentation. Is anyone else here to speak on this item? Sir, would you, yes, thank you, both of you, raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in this manner? Say I do. Thank you, you may sit down.
So while we wait for the projector to come on, for the record, Lauren Miklak, I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department, presenting case number MS 1306. I would like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the subdivision regulations, and this digital presentation. The property is within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, city council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. So just a quick orientation to the property, on your screen is an aerial, north is to the top of the screen, and the subject property is outlined in blue at 9801 West 32nd Avenue. It is a corner lot, so it has frontage on 32nd and along Jellison. You can see that on the southern half of the property, there is a single-family home, and based on county records, that home was built in 1955 before the city incorporated. This slide is the same aerial image with an excerpt of the zoning map. That yellow color that is covering the entire area is the residential one zone district, so that's one of our residential districts that allows only for single-family homes. You can see that it's entirely surrounded by R1 properties, and then the small sliver along the bottom of the screen at 32nd Avenue, that's not shaded, because that's outside of the city boundary, that's Crown Hill Park, maintained by the county. As council is aware, tonight, the subdivision will not affect the zoning or the permitted uses, so R1 zoning will remain, single-family home is the permitted use on the existing lot and the proposed lot. This is an image from Jellison looking south, so you can see in the background is the single-family home that's existing, and then the vacant area in the foreground is the area that will become that new second lot. So just briefly, this is the entire subdivision plat with the images and the declarations, and we'll zoom in here on the proposed lot lines. Those are highlighted in blue, and both the existing and proposed lot will exceed the R1 development standards, so both lots will be more than 100 feet in width and more than 12,500 square feet in area. They're both rectangular in shape, no variances are needed as far as setbacks for that existing home on Lot 1. The reason that council is reviewing a two-lot subdivision is because of the narrow area of right-of-way dedication, and that's highlighted in yellow on the bottom of the screen. Whenever we get a subdivision plat, we look at the adjacent streets to see if they meet our current standards, and 32nd Avenue is a designated route in the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and it's just slightly substandard, so there will be a five-foot width of right-of-way that's dedicated. Our final designs for 32nd Avenue aren't known, so the applicant will pay a fee instead of constructing those improvements. And briefly, as with all subdivision applications, it was sent on referral, and the proposed new lot can be served by all the utility districts. The Public Works Department has reviewed and approved the plat, and Planning Commission held a public hearing on December 19th and recommended approval. During that hearing and all of our posting periods, we haven't had any objections to the proposal. For these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision request. The applicants in the audience, and this concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Do we have questions of, or do you want to wait till we hear the applicant? Will you be speaking? That'll be fine. Your name, sir, and your address, spell your last name.
William James Stevens, 314-88, Conifer Mountain Drive, Conifer, Colorado. I still have a bad throat. Other information?
Did you have something to say, or just available for questions?
What Lauren has presented is my ground too, so I'm just here to answer questions if you.
Okay. Does anybody on council have questions for Mr. Stevens? Or Lauren? Nope, okay. Thank you. Do we have, let's see, do we have any public comment on this? I have a Petro Vaske on item number three. No comments, sir? Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no further questions or comment, I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Resolution Number 8-2014, a resolution approving a two-lot subdivision plat with right-of-way dedication for property zone residential one located at 9801 West 32nd Avenue for the following reasons. One, city council has conducted a proper public hearing that meets all public notice requirements as required by Section 26-109 and 26-407 of the Code of Laws. Two, the requested subdivision has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its recommendation. Three, the subdivision plat has been found in compliance with Article 4 of Chapter 26 of the Code of Laws. Four, both lots are consistent with R1 zoning district standards. And five, all agencies can provide services to the property with improvements installed at the developer's expense, and with the following conditions. One, fees in lieu of streetscape improvements will be provided prior to recording the plat. And two, fees in lieu of parkland dedication will be provided prior to recording the plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Starker is seconding. There is a move, a motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Let's go ahead and poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you, let's move on to item number four. Mr. Starker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number four. This is a motion to award the contract for the Wadsworth Boulevard Planning and Environmental Linkage Study to Parsons Brinkerhoff, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $962,351.41, with an additional contingency amount of $96,200 for a total cost of $1,585,51.41. At issue in this matter, the city was awarded funding for a transportation study on Wadsworth Boulevard from 36th to 46th Avenue through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog Transportation Improvement Program in September 2012. The study consists of a planning environmental linkage study to identify traffic congestion and safety issues, and to develop multimodal solutions and related environmental mitigation for future construction improvements to address mobility in this highway corridor. Parsons Brinkerhoff was selected by established procurement process to perform the study for an amount of $962,351.41.
We have staff's presentation?
Okay, thank you, your honor members of the council. As council member Starker outlined pretty well, what you have in front of you for consideration tonight is to award a contract to the consulting firm of Parsons Brinkerhoff for the Wadsworth Boulevard PEL study. And explain a little bit first what a PEL study is. PEL stands for Planning and Environmental Linkage, and what it is, is a higher-level, kind of a 30,000-foot view, more of an environmental assessment, doesn't quite go into the same amount of detail and expenses, an environmental assessment, which is normally done when you're further along in a design process. You may already have some designs for the roadway in mind, some alternatives, you're a little further along. What the PEL study does is it allows us to start more of the conceptual design, identify the real traffic issues, the environmental issues potentially, drainage, utilities, and also the land use that goes alongside of a highway design or roadway design itself. And the advantage of doing the PEL study, there's a couple advantages actually. One is it's less expensive, we can do a lot of the groundwork up front before we go into a real detailed environmental assessment, and it helps us to, it kind of sets us up as a roadmap for the future, for improvements to the roadway, because we know the corridor here is long enough that, and expensive enough, that someday when we rebuild it, it might not be able to be done all at once, it may be done in phases, whether it's the roadway or the redevelopment that goes alongside it. So the PEL allows us to kind of set up a planning document of sorts in a way that, as we go through different stages here, we have a roadmap, a good idea of what we need to do there. And the PEL study also sets the table for us as far as potentially getting funding grants in the future. When we've done all this groundwork and have it in place, it does help us in our, in our applications to get funding when the need comes. There we go. Just to outline the corridor a little bit here, we're essentially looking at the Wadsworth Boulevard corridor through the entire width length of the city here from just north of 32nd Avenue, as we start getting into the commercial areas where the congestion really starts getting heavier, and running, the study will run up to about Clear Creek, just south of the I-70 interchange. And what the study will also allow us to do is look at the roadway itself, as far as what should Wadsworth Boulevard look like in the future, how many lanes of traffic does it need to carry, as we, you know, look to accommodate multimodal transportation needs more, what are the transit needs, what should we be doing to the roadway to accommodate transit? Bicycles and pedestrians, the same thing. This is also an area that's primed for redevelopment, and we've got some key intersections that go along with that, like 38th Avenue and 44th Avenue. Those are very high-volume congested intersections that affect the streets that come into it, such as 38th and 44th Avenue. So this allows us to look at the whole corridor comprehensively too, not just the roadway itself, but the adjacent land uses. Wadsworth is a very heavy north-south corridor, not just for Wheat Ridge, but for the whole west Denver metro area. As you go west of I-25, there really aren't any real speedy through north-south routes, and Wadsworth really carries the bulk of that. Again, it's a major regional arterial, carries about 41,000 vehicles per day, which is a real heavy load for a roadway like Wadsworth that has traffic signals and all the uses and accesses close by, part of the national highway system. And again, 35th to 48th is probably the most congested segment in the corridor right now. As you go north into Arvada, the roadway actually has been improved and carries traffic a little better than it does in Wheat Ridge. Same thing, you go further south into Lakewood and past Highway 6 especially, it's also wider and has a better ability to carry traffic. So this segment we're looking at here really needs some improvement in the future here. Tentative schedule, we're looking at about an 18-month process with Parsons Brinkerhoff to finish the PEL. It'll be a series of public meetings, council study sessions, reports back to council. We're expecting, anticipating a nice public participation process with lots of participation from our partners in the community, the businesses, the residents, and other stakeholders. What we're proposing tonight is a motion to award a contract to Parsons Brinkerhoff in the amount of $962,651. We also have a $10,000, or, excuse me, a 10% contingency built in there for any extra work or unanticipated technical issues we may have to have them work with. And again, we think this is a real positive move forward for the city to begin looking at the corridor here, starting the study. Wadsworth is a CDOT roadway, we will be working closely with our CDOT partners on this, and going ahead with the public process. So our recommendation is to award a contract to Parsons Brinkerhoff, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Mr. Starker has a question?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Scott, we may not be able to build this roadway in the near future, what is our shelf life on this PEL?
It kind of depends on the issues that are identified in the PEL. Ken, you may be able to answer that question a little better, but once we have the issues, the technical issues identified, it normally does carry, I would say, for five to 10 years, is what I've seen in the past on these, before you really have to go through wholesale changes. It may depend on if something changes in the future, if, say, the traffic volumes change or something, and we have to kind of really redo a lot of what was done in the PEL, then it kind of loses its validity, and we do have to redo things. But as long as we get into the future and the issues are pretty much the same, and we're going along the same course of what's been identified, it can be used for quite a while.
And in the course of transportation development in our city, we feel that doing the PEL at this time, and the shelf life that it has, we would be able to move forward within that timeframe, so that we could benefit out of this project.
Yeah, that's correct, and what it helps also is, as we're moving forward with redevelopment here, with a lot of the land use alongside the corridor, identifying right-of-way needs is a big thing, especially when we're looking at trying to maybe add bike and pedestrian accommodations or pullouts for bus vehicles. It's real important when we're working with developers and identifying right-of-way needs that we know what we need there. So that's where this is real helpful as well.
Ms. Davis?
Thanks. So I just have a couple questions for, kind of in lines with that. So in the readings, it shows that it's been something that's been talked about for 20 years. And so I know we're getting a grant, but at the same time, we're also putting some money into it. So is there any commitment from Dr. Cog that, you know, by working on this project, that it will be done within this shelf lifetime? it will be done within this shelf lifetime?
Yeah, well, the grant we have is from Dr. Cog, so along with the support of CDOT. So this is obviously a very important segment priority in terms of Dr. Cog and even CDOT, just to get the money to do this in the first place. But I think once we get going with the study and we identify even some things we can do in the interim, besides a full-blown reconstruction of the whole corridor, if there's improvements we can do at the intersections, maybe just intersection improvements, upgrade the signals, things like that, there's phases, there's ways we can keep moving forward with this without worrying about having the money to do the whole thing.
And then one other question is, so in a lot of the document, it only talks from 36th to 46th Avenue, but in your PowerPoint, you said to 48th. And I guess my thought is, is it almost needs to go to the I-70 because going up that hill is pure craziness, and down that hill is pure craziness. So is that section going to be considered? Because it seems like we, I mean, it almost seems like we need to do it to the Arvada, you know, line, because that is a crazy place on Wadsworth.
Right, we did actually discuss that with the consultant as we were going through with the interview process, and we did move the project limits up north a little further. It says 48th. Essentially, we were going to take it up to Clear Creek or about to the I-70 ramps, and we were careful to stop it there because once we start heading into those ramps and start talking about changing those, then the whole interchange gets thrown in as well, and it just kind of blows up on us, so we kept it there.
All right. Mr. Fitzgerald?
It's about time we looked at 38th, yay, or excuse me, Wadsworth, yay. Something that needs to be done, so I'm really happy to see this done. But just to swage my ignorance, since this is a state highway, why should we do anything at all?
Well, there's federal funding involved with this, a little over half million dollars. CDOT is partnering with us and helping to administer the federal funds. The city's driving this project, running it, because it's in our best interest. We have a lot of potential there with redevelopment. It's a big deal for us as far as the land use along there, not just along Wadsworth itself, but the corridors that feed into it like 38th and 44th. So, you know, for us to drive this, it's appropriate. But yeah, the funding, if we could get more money from CDOT, yeah, that would be welcome, but it's a tough road.
With regard to other alternatives for this grant, was it Dr. Cog's requirement that we use it for a P E L, or could we use it for the purchase of right-of-way, or what was the decision-making process to choose the P E L?
Yeah, the reason for the P E L is it's a higher-level study, being we're not at that point where we're really going into a design yet, so their intent with giving us the award was specifically to do the P E L, and we're not at the point yet where we're ready to purchase right-of-way or make those extra expenses.
Are we ready for a motion? Mr. Starker?
I keep hitting the wrong button. Madam Mayor, I move to award the contract for the Wadsworth Boulevard Planning and Environmental Linkage Study to Parsons Brinkerhoff, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of $962,351.41, with an additional contingency amount of $96,200 for a total sum of $1,058,551.41.
Second?
A motion has been awarded, and to award has been given and seconded by Mr. DeTulio. Are there further discussion, or are we ready to vote? Ready for the question? Oh, we have another discussion?
Just, Mr. Dahl, I have a question for you. On a matter of conflict of interest, if my wife is employed by the Federal Highway Administration in some manner or form overseeing this project, is there any kind of conflict of interest there?
The analysis would be whether either way the council would vote, if that would have any potential of a positive or negative effect on your income, your family income. And I've often held, and I appreciate you raising it, but I've often held, and it's good we make it a matter of record here, I've consistently held that where there is not a potential for financial gain or loss as a result of your voting on the contract, then you may do so and should.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it sounds like we're ready for the vote.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Ready to move on to item number five. Tracy Langworthy, would you read that?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, Madam Mayor. A motion to approve the purchase of 2014 vehicle replacements and the purchase and installation of lighting and auxiliary and communication equipment in a total amount not to exceed Staff recommends approval of the purchase of the following vehicles under the State of Colorado price agreements. Three 2014 marked Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles, $30,913 each. One 2014 unmarked Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicle, $30,913 each. One 2014 Ford Fusion Hybrid Sedan, $23,285 each. One large Ford F-150 Extended Cab 4x4 Pickup, $22,207 each. One large Ford F-150 Crew Cab 4x4 Pickup, $26,654 each. Two large Ford F-250 Extended Cab 4x4 Pickups with Plow Packages, $29,784 each. One large Ford F-350 4x4 Cab and Chassis with Dump Bed Body and Lift Gate Package, $35,544 each. Total cost $290,910. Staff also recommends approval of the purchase and installation and/or relocation of auxiliary equipment required for the operation of the replacement vehicles, along with the installation of lighting, markings, and communication equipment at a total cost not to exceed $86,590. The total cost of the vehicles, including preparation for use, is not to exceed $377,500, as approved in the 2014 budget. Is the motion in order?
A motion is in order.
I move to approve the purchase of 2014 vehicle replacements and the purchase and installation of lighting and auxiliary and communications equipment in a total amount not to exceed $377,500.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Wooton. It's been moved and seconded. Are we ready for the vote? Please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion, please. No discussion? Then we are ready for the vote? We do have some...
So I just have one quick question. Because typically, we have a list of what we're replacing, and I know in the document it says it's following the policy, but I'm just curious, does it follow, I mean, in the past, we've kind of looked at it, and some of it's been, you know, that we're replacing things that have not just hit the replacement time, but are way past the replacement time. So where do these fall as far as, are they way, I mean, are they just hitting the thresholds of the policy, or are they...
Yeah, we do have that information. I believe Mr. Brink could report on that. A couple of these vehicles are new. As we discussed during the budget process, we've asked to bring on a new vehicle for our Parks and Rec, our Parks Maintenance Staff. We did, council did approve an addition of one Parks Maintenance Staff to help with our Discovery Park and our soon-to-be new park on 44th Avenue. So that vehicle is new to help with that. The rest of them are detailed under the recommendation on what vehicles they are replacing. And Scott and I discussed this throughout the budget cycle and made sure that these are the most extreme vehicles that need replaced. And we honestly have probably another million or so in vehicles that are probably due for replacement, but we feel we can stretch them out a few more years, so we're not, so we didn't recommend those for replacement. But maybe Scott can address them in more detail.
Yes, that's correct. I mean, in addition to the newer vehicles for the newer positions that city manager mentioned, particularly the police vehicles are, yes, they are at the thresholds, kind of in everything, the mileage they've accumulated, the amount of downtime, the number of time they're in the shop, expenses, getting parts, and some just get old enough where they may not even meet certain legal requirements anymore as far as emissions and safety and so forth. So in weighing all these things together, yeah, these vehicles are at the threshold.
Any further discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
That concludes our council meeting for the night, for the evening. We will move on to a study session, but let's go ahead and have our commentary from the various council members. Genevieve, do you want to start?
I'd like to invite everybody to the Live Local Harvest 2014 Food and Film Series. This is a really neat film series. We did it last year, it was very successful. The first one of 2014 will be this Wednesday, the 29th, at 6:30. It is at the Active Adult Center, which is 6363 West 35th Avenue. There's a potluck, and then they show a film, and this month, it's going to be a film called The Green Horns. It's a great event, and I'd like everybody to know about it, and please come.
Ms. Langworthy?
I'd just like to say, "Go Broncos," because I have my date planner at home, so all the upcoming events that I normally list that I try to mention are not with me this evening. But I hope we all enjoy a very safe Sunday, cheering on our team.
Tracy wore her most lucky Bronco color blouse shirt. Yes, so this is a guaranteed win we got going on here. Mr. Fitzgerald?
This doesn't apply to Wheat Ridge, but I heard tonight that the Denver County Fair will include a marijuana pavilion, so I just think that's very interesting.
George?
It's tough to follow.
Yeah, it's tough to follow.
Tim and I had the privilege of hosting a small coffee and donut gathering at the rec center this Saturday for District 3, and we had good attendance. Well, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out for that and let everyone know that we'll continue to outreach and see how we can better communicate with our district and hear from you about the things that are coming up. So that's all I have.
Ms. Davis?
So just a couple things. I want to thank the work that's been done on the Board of Renewal Wheat Ridge and Steve Art and all the staff for that. I know some of that development's been a long time coming, so excited to see that happening on Kipling. And then the other thing I wanted to say, just because these things are getting closer to home, was the event that took place at Stanley Lake today, and that my thoughts and, or probably our thoughts, are with that community tonight in this time. It's tough, and so I just wanted to extend my thoughts there.
Thank you, Kristi. Mr. Urban?
Thank you. Colorado Plus is having a beer dinner on February 6th at 6:30 PM. It's a great way to support your local economy and come out and enjoy some great food. They asked me to share that information. And then one note that I'd like to make is to keep your, to keep the family of Sergeant Dave Baldwin in your thoughts and prayers tonight. He was the Jefferson County Deputy that was killed on Sunday in a horrible accident, so keep the entire Jefferson County Sheriff's Department in your thoughts and prayers as well.
Thank you.
Go Broncos.
Mr. Starker?
My only thought tonight would be to, a couple of things. It's, we still continue to have snow, and I hope everyone will try to shovel their walks and make their communities safe as we walk around and enjoy the beautiful city that we have, and I wish the Denver Broncos the best of luck on Sunday.
And Mr. DeTulio?
Thank you. I just wanted to report one thing. Mr. Goff, I've, in fact, she's here tonight, she wanted to let people know that our staff to look at restriping the area around 47th and Harland. It's because of the weather and because of the gravel and everything else that's over there, it's really hard to see the lanes and the stripes for the turn lanes and those going straight lanes, right at 47th, 48th and Harland. And so if staff could take a look at that possibly, once it warms up a little bit, to restrip that so that people can see the different lanes. Thanks.
And I forgot to, thank you for Kristi reminding me to ask for the city manager matters.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I would, I'm pleased to announce that, talking about construction projects, that our 32nd and Youngfield intersection improvements is about done. I would like to thank our residents and especially our businesses for their patience during this project. It was, you know, it was a big project, another grant-funded project that needed to be done many years ago. It was horrible before we did any improvements to it, so I think that's a pretty good reason why it was a little cumbersome during the renovation to get it to where it is today. So they're going, there's, most of the work that's left is behind-the-curb type work, so landscaping and such, which may have to wait till spring or summer. So hopefully, everybody's seen the improvements at the intersection. Thanks.
And the city clerk?
I'm nothing tonight, thank you.
City treasurer over there in his Bronco shirt? Just go Broncos? And we're ready. City attorney, please?
I have from you the task of redoing the council rules of procedure, and I'm doing that, and you'll have that available to you your next meeting. In both a clean and red line form. I'm sure there's going to be things I didn't get right and you'll want to add, because it was a pretty complicated and somewhat subjective little project, but it's been fun to do, and I'll provide it to you shortly.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. It reminds me all the stuff that I keep missing, and we're going to have a recess of 10 minutes, and I only can say, hurry, hurry.
If we are looking at putting bike lanes in the street itself, we're really taking a look at compromising some of the other features that have been prioritized by our community. And if we have to take away from some of the sidewalk amenities that were placed as number one through the public input, we're really taking away from some of that place making that has been very important to a lot of different components. So I'd like us to figure out a way that we can accommodate bikes without taking away from that sidewalk amenity. One thing that came up in the 38th Avenue Leadership Meeting that we had before this was to evaluate the opportunity of maybe making a multi-use trail on one side of 38th Avenue that would actually be a multi-use sidewalk trail and get the bikes off the street in that segment. So I think there's a lot of different ways of accommodating bikes without actually doing bike lanes. That could be sharrows, so I think that's about all I have to say. Thank you guys for your attention.
We have another speaker. Janelle, are you timing?
I didn't time that one. Do they only get three minutes for study session?
Three minutes on study session as well. Please remember that you only get three minutes on study session. Okay. Could you give us your name and same thing?
Hi, my name is Jerry Nealon. I have a business at 67 Seventy West 38th Avenue. I go clear back to the Steering Committee when this was all brought up and was prioritized as far as amenity zones, parking and bicycling, and bike lanes went to the very bottom of the list. And I was one of those that said no, but then we had that extra room and bike lanes went in. I enjoy them, I must admit. I was wrong and I do enjoy the bike lanes. We did talk about this just before the thing is, you know, there's got to be a better way than putting in, you know, giving up 12-foot, six-foot on each side for going through 38th Avenue. And again, it's kind of like the cars, we want bikes, pedestrians, cars to come to 38th Avenue, not go through 38th Avenue. So if we can get some better way, point signage, like 32nd and Teller, 32nd and Pierce, point people in the direction of 38th Avenue, then again, I think Rachel hit it on the head, you know, on the north side, make it a little bit wider, maybe even give up, I'd give up even parking as much as I hate to say that, but, but, you know, and make it more of a cruising bicycle. Nobody's going to be flying through here with the spandex on. I think again, just make it a community thing where people can walk, they can be on their bicycle, and I think we can be biker friendly without being bicycle specific. So again, you know, maybe additional signs, bike parking, things like that. I think that would go a long way on 38th Avenue. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your help.
We have another speaker.
Hi, my name's Byron Whitehorn. I live at 3505 Marshall Street. I just kind of want to echo what they were saying. Real quick, my story is, is that we bought the property, 35th and Marshall, and one of the reasons we purchased it is because the proximity to downtown, to the mountain areas. And also, it's been passed on through the family, and so we have a long history of being there. And I'm sure a lot of you have been in your areas of Wheat Ridge longer than we have, but my wife's grandfather's been here since 1957. So we want to see things continue to move along, and so that's why I wanted to be a part of this initiative. And we're really excited to see the opportunities. And so on 35th, we see a lot of bikes and pedestrians walking by, but I don't think that a large percentage of them actually know that they can go up on 38th and, you know, visit some of the shops that are there. So what I'd like to see is some signage that kind of directs them towards that way. And so that's what we were kind of talking about in our meeting is the wayfinding, the signage is there. So I'd like to see, you know, more people being directed there from 35th and 32nd, and, you know, just really slow down, like she said, and explore. So I think it's a great opportunity, and if we can combine the pedestrian side with the cycling side, I think we can meet all of our obligations that we're trying to do with the streetscape here.
Thank you. Is there any other person?
Good evening, Tara Jan, T-A-R-A-J-A-H-N, and I'm at 3620 High Court. I just wanted to say thank you again. Like, we have been involved in this project since 2009 when it first started, and now that we see like these final plans coming up of like deciding of how we're going to look at bike lanes on the final project, it's just super great to see the progress that's happened in the past five years and being able to see the community revitalize and being able to use the corridor more and see new businesses. And again, as my position with Wheat Ridge 2020 and organizing events with Live Local Wheat Ridge, it's also, we've had, you know, two years now of cruiser crawls, and it's very, it's nice to be able to see facilities on the corridor, to be able to, as Rachel said, to slow down and also use the corridor as a destination and being able to bring people from other cities, but also from within Wheat Ridge to use the bike lanes. And one addition I think would be great to add to the conversation would be to focus on parking reservoirs. When we did have these large events, and there was a couple that were organized in Wheat Ridge that weren't affiliated with ours, there was, you know, overflows of bikes, and I know that when we have big public events on the green, it'd be nice to be able to have facilities where if we do attract lots of traffic, whether it's pedestrian or bike, there'd be spaces to park in addition to automotive parking. So just wanted to add that into consideration. I know that at one point C+ was trying to do some fundraising to get some at their facility on like a private spot, but it'd be nice if the city could also figure out how that could fit into the end of the design process. So thanks again. I'm really excited. I know there's a lot of other community members who have just moved here, who've been here for a long time, who are also quite excited to see this project moving forward. So thanks.
We have one more. I take it, or whatever. Eric, oops, not supposed to know his name yet.
Hi, Eric Wilson, W-I-L-S-O-N. I live at 3743 J Street. I want to thank all of council and especially Councilmember DiTilio for really pushing having bike lanes on 38th Avenue. I'm both a bicyclist and a pedestrian, and I like getting to the 38th Avenue corridor both ways. And I think in this case, I looked at the different plans, and I think as a pedestrian, I really want to, the corridor to be a nice place to walk around, and it really looks great with the trees over there. So I think in this case, not having bike lanes would be preferable for me. And I just want to echo what some of the other people have said, that, you know, alternatives like having shared lane markers on 38th Avenue would be great, and also having good ways to get to the corridor from 35th Avenue and 41st. So whether it's wayfinding or shared lanes or bike lanes on those streets. So thanks.
Is there anyone else? Okay, I think we have a staff presentation, do we?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and Johnstone Community Development Director, and do have a relatively brief presentation, but wanted to just kind of summarize some of the things that were in the memo that we provided for you in your packet. Just by way of a little bit of recent history, we were in front of council and back in, just in December on the 16th for a study session where we reported out on our metrics and then also on our, the final recommendations or the draft recommendations on the streetscape project that was done by our design consultant in Tellicki. So that was the main topic. We got good direction from council that evening. From the direction at the end of the meeting was really several things. One of them to look at bike lanes and incorporating bike lanes into the design for 38th Avenue and some options for that, and we'll spend the bulk of obviously this evening talking about that. But then also to extend the scope of the final design, further past Pierce to the east towards Newlander-Marshall. Also to look at the bike network and how it feeds in, as has been discussed tonight, and we have some discussion of that in the packet as well. To add in some sort of a civic component or look at where that feature could be, we talked about possibly having some sort of a civic component at the green, at the Wheat Ridge 58. So that was all great direction, and what we've done in the interim time at a staff level, not so much using the design consultant because it wasn't really part of their scope of work, but is to take a look at what we could do in terms of bike lanes is what we moved forward with in the street. So we've generated two options for you to consider tonight, and also made some suggestions and have some graphics that kind of hopefully highlight some other ways, regardless of where you want to go in terms of bike facilities specifically on 38th Avenue, but ways, as people have noted, of getting people to the corridor through wayfinding and through other alternate routes that, again, really are important things either way, depending on what you do on 38th Avenue specifically. So before we introduce or show the graphics for the actual sections of the road, we want to kind of give you some of our logic of how we went into our decision-making process in terms of the designs that we're moving forward. Just to back up a little bit, through the corridor planning process that was completed a couple of years ago, we really, early on in that process, made the decision that it really wasn't going to be, in our minds, realistic to get additional right-of-way, and there were a couple of reasons for that. It costs money, so we knew, you know, that's certainly a consideration with limited funds. And we also knew that it would have some pretty significant impacts on properties. The character of, particularly in the Main Street area, the character of the built environment in that area is very much the fact that, you know, many buildings are pushed right up close to the property line. And if not the buildings, the parkings, and we're very cognizant of the fact that, you know, parking is a premium in the corridor planning process, that was definitely an emphasis. Whether it be public on-street parking, public parking lots, or private parking, if the corridor and the businesses that are there are going to be successful, really having adequate parking is critical. So we're trying to be cognizant of that and didn't think that acquiring more right-of-way would certainly have an impact on the supply of parking. And then, as has been mentioned already this evening, we went through a process of, given that right-of-way limitation, of asking the public what we should prioritize, and we really gave them three choices. Sidewalks and amenity zones, on-street parking, and bike lanes. And sidewalks and amenity zones were the highest priorities. So those were our kind of initial design considerations. As we look at the different elements that are in the approved section from our design consultant and also in the corridor plan itself, you know, we really tried to get to the minimum dimensions that we felt were appropriate from a travel perspective. So travel lanes at 10 feet, a center turn lane at 11 feet. And actually, travel lanes on an arterial, if you look at engineering standards, are typically recommended to be between 10 and 12 feet. So we felt like 10 feet was kind of the safest minimum that we could go to in that dimension. Parking lane is fairly standard to go with a six-foot dimension to accommodate the width of a car. And then the two that are maybe somewhat more subjective, but the amenity zones and the sidewalks, spent a fair amount of time looking at what we felt were minimum dimensions for those two components. Amanity zone could also be called the landscape zone. The amenity zone is alternatively hardscape, features like pedestrian pole, light poles, bike racks, benches, but also importantly landscaping, and also importantly in our mind, trees. And really the feeling was that six feet was really a minimum dimension that you could support healthy tree growth and have, you know, irrigation and room for roots to grow. So that was the rationale behind that amenity zone. So both programmatically, wanting to be able to get things in that area like seating, but then just functionally in terms of healthy plantings and healthy trees. The sidewalk and that amenity zone dimension is also consistent with the Streetscape Design Manual that we've adopted. Same thing with the sidewalk. The sidewalk dimension at eight feet is certainly a broader sidewalk than maybe a typical five or six-foot that you see in a residential zone. Our recommended sidewalk dimension in the Streetscape Design Manual is eight feet for 38th Avenue. And really that's to, the goal was to really achieve a, you know, highly walkable environment. And I think five or six-foot sidewalk is certainly very appropriate in a residential context, but when you're trying to encourage a lot of activity and having people, you know, with space to be able to congregate, you know, navigate each other in groups, eight feet really felt was the minimum dimension that was appropriate. So that got us to these two section views. We have two kind of predominant right-of-way widths, one of 63 feet and one that's 75 feet. That's in more of the 75 wider dimension is more on the east side of the Main Street corridor, excuse me, the west side. So the 75 feet is where we can begin to accommodate on-street parking, which was also a priority coming out of the corridor planning process. So I'll try and just walk you through these dimensions, but if you start in the roadway, you see a 10-foot travel lane in each dimension, and then that shared center turn lane at 11 feet, a two-foot curb pan on both sides, the six-foot amenity zone in this location, and then that eight-foot sidewalk. And that takes up the full 63 feet of right-of-way and/or easements for the majority of the corridor. We have a combination of right-of-way and easements that totals 63 feet. And then in that, the section that's on the western side of the Main Street area, again, we add essentially the on-street parking on either side at six feet, and otherwise the sections remain the same. So amenity zone at six feet and sidewalks at eight feet. And obviously, this is just a graphical representation, but again, we feel like those street trees are really a critical component of really enclosing the street and giving it a nice landscape character, shade, just to create a more pleasant environment. And then moving on to the bike lane analysis that we were tasked with from your last meeting in December. Again, some design considerations that we started with, again, the no additional right-of-way was an assumption. And then we didn't change any of the vehicular lane widths as we went into our staff design effort for looking at bike lanes. So all those dimensions that I just mentioned in terms of the parking, the turn lanes, the through lanes, all stayed the same. So it seemed to us, in our analysis, that where you really had to look was reducing the sidewalk and/or the amenity zone, and those are the alternatives that we looked at. In terms of the additional elements that were incorporated, we did have to make a determination as to what would be appropriate for a bike lane dimension, and what we proposed in the sections that we brought forward to this evening is a six-foot dimension. ASHTO, which is a national standardized transportation document that makes recommendations on things like this from an insurance standpoint, recommends a five-foot bike lane as kind of the baseline, but to look to go larger than that if you can, depending on kind of the turnover that you're expecting and the presence of on-street parking, as well as variable depending on the, kind of the level of traffic that's on the street, and 38th Avenue does carry, you know, about 18,000 cars a day. So we went with the six-foot dimension on that. Now, in the, where the bike lanes are immediately adjacent to the curb, we could skinny that up a little bit to go with four feet of an actual asphalt and then take advantage of the two-foot curb. So those were our design assumptions going into these two design sections. So we have two options. We have option one, which we're calling the full-width sidewalk option, and then option two, which we'll speak to next, which is a reduced-width sidewalk. So the full-width sidewalk is what it sounds like. It keeps the eight-foot sidewalk in this location. In the area where we have a 63-foot right-of-way, which is the top section view, that just leaves you with a two-foot amenity zone, and that really isn't an adequate space where you can accommodate any improvements and not be in conflict with people, the activities that are on the street. In the 75-foot right-of-way on the bottom, again, adding in a six-foot bike lane adjacent to parked cars, again, all the more reason why we felt like that six-foot dimension was necessary. And that leaves nothing but the sidewalk on the sides of the streets. So that's option one that we drafted. Then option two, if you try and skinny up that sidewalk, we propose going down to a five-foot dimension. That gives you a little bit more room to play with in terms of the amenity zone. So looking at the top section, or maybe I'll start with the bottom section in this case, you're given a three-foot amenity zone, and we felt like you could get vertical improvements in that location, like streetlights, like wayfinding signage, that sort of thing, without being in conflict with the parking lane. It didn't really mention, but we also were operating in the assumption that we had that two-foot clear zone that allows people to open the car doors and not be in conflict with some of those improvements. So that's an assumption as well. Now, as you get up to the 63-foot right-of-way, which is the top graphic, you'll note that that five-foot amenity zone starts to accommodate a little bit more types of things that could be planted. Again, we didn't think it would support trees because we had decided that the six-feet dimension was the minimum dimension that we felt would support adequate tree and root growth. But we did think we could get landscape planners and some sort of enhanced landscaping, as well as benches and things like that, bike racks. And then you also took us, asked us to look at, you know, what are the alternatives? And it's really critical, as I mentioned, really regardless of how we move forward on the actual bike component on 38th Avenue. Getting to 38th Avenue by foot, by bike, from the surrounding areas is critical. And we have, you know, bike groups on 35th, on 41st, on 32nd, on 44th, and all those are important places to be able to navigate to 38th Avenue to the Ridge at 38 from, city council budgeted this year for a bike improvement project on Pierce, which is also a designated bike route. And again, having wayfinding signage and ways to find your way to the Ridge at 38 from those parallel or perpendicular crossroads on a bicycle is really critical. So we think there's some probably fairly cost-effective ways of being able to take advantage of those bike routes in close proximity. And that's really our substantive presentation. We obviously are looking for direction from council this evening as to whether to move forward with further design work on the bike lanes or with what was presented back on the 16th, and which design option to pursue.
Madam Chair? Is it time for questions? Well, comments, questions, I got a little bit of everything. Mr. Johnson, could you go back to the cross-section of the, with the bike lanes that?
For the bike lanes?
Yeah. I wanted to pass out these photos.
Option one or option two?
Option two is fine.
Give them all to me. I'll take one and pass them down.
So my concern was is that I felt that this is obviously, the residents in Districts One, and I've talked to a lot of other folks, like the tree-lined street, right? And so this option, when you look at it, looks awfully barren compared to the previous option that was approved, but the fact of the matter is that had the trees in this desert. So I went down to 38th Avenue over the weekend, took some photos, and the amenity zone here on 38th Avenue east of Harlan, if you look at that, that grassy area is five feet. And then the one area in front of the Darby Cabinets, that's about three feet. So I guess I don't understand how we could say we need six feet of growing space on the 63-foot right-of-way and easements. There's five feet right there, so you could actually do what you're seeing on 38th Avenue east of Harlan. And then my other comment was on the 75-foot right-of-way and the easements, was that a bike lane, I would suggest reducing that bike lane to four feet and then also have the amenity zone be five feet also. So it would all, it would match the 38th Avenue Harlan West where it's five feet of tree growing and benches and everything else and lights. One of the consensus that was made before I was even on city council was that the east side of 38th would look like the west side, and if you go with the five-foot amenity zone, which we have on the east side of Harlan, that has a five-foot right-of-way where the trees are growing, and then it's even narrower in front of Darby's Cabinets. And I'm not recommending that, because all that is is gravel. But where the grass is, that's five feet. And then if you were to take the 75-foot right-of-way and easements and narrow down that bike lane to six, to four feet and add the two feet to the amenity zone, you have a five-foot amenity zone across the entire section that we're looking at, and you could have the trees and the benches and everything else that we have east of Harlan. So my concern is that once the street is approved and we take away the bike lanes, we're never going to be able to put them back because we're moving curb and gutter. And the other concern I have is that Wheat Ridge Cyclery is right in the middle of this mix, and they're one of the highest sales tax generators in this city, quite a bit of money per quarter, and they could take advantage of these bike lanes along with being their business. So I think it would support a local business by having the bike lanes. It would support our local residents to go down 38th Avenue and to shop there or bike or ride. Plus, the fact of the matter is, we could have those trees. I think this plan right here could be a five-foot amenity zone with trees or art or planners, just the way it is east of Harlan. So I just don't understand why we have to change it so much that one plan is going to look so negative and one plan, the original plan, looks quote-unquote positive. Because I know the folks out in the audience and folks watching this all wanted those trees. And that's what I was trying to have, is the best of both worlds. And I suggested the bike lanes.
Do we have other discussion, comments? Mr. Fitzgerald?
I think removing the amenity zones and the sidewalks almost destroys the entire concept here. So I really don't want to give up amenity zones. And we already heard from the bike people that with some modifications, they're willing to accept it as it was originally planned. So I would just like to suggest we go back to the original plan.
Mr. Johnson, thank you for your presentation. I think you guys have done what we asked you to do, for one thing, and I appreciate that. I noticed on the, can you talk a little bit about the sharrows? Which is, as I understand, cars and bicycles sharing the lane. And I see that in your plan view of the proposed bike routes that we don't show sharrows on 38th Avenue, and I didn't know whether that was by design or not. And do you think, do you think a shero, if for one reason or another and we're not able to put in a dedicated bike lane on both, on both sides of the street, would that accommodate or ameliorate the ability to put bicycles?
Well, sharrows are certainly something that, you know, in terms of our Bike Ped Master Plan, we think is a component that can work and be effective in certain contexts. I think our, I'm not an engineer, as you know, but our engineers have taken a look at the traffic volumes on 38th Avenue and don't think that sharrows, a shared lane essentially, is appropriate, given the traffic volumes and speeds that we have on 38th Avenue, that those volumes and speeds are too high to use a shero as the right tool.
Would you see, and if we didn't have a, I'm thinking about bicycle traffic showing up on 38th Avenue. There would be enough room on an eight-foot wide sidewalk to walk your bicycle from up and down the corridor for those areas?
Yeah, I think, we don't have this law on the books in Wheat Ridge, to my knowledge, but in some communities, it's legal and permissible to actually ride your bike for the last block to and from your destination. So if you're leaving your home, let's say, and driving to a destination in that last block where you might, it might not make sense to be on the street for whatever reason, you can be on your bike. So, I mean, my experience, I'm a bicyclist for sure, is, you know, it's kind of context-specific. You know, you get to a location, you know, there may be pedestrian traffic, you may choose to dismount, you may choose to stay on your bike if it seems like that's appropriate. I think bike parking is critical, and the comment's been made today and before, you know, whether it be public reservoirs, which we've, you know, already done some of, private facilities, which some have been proposed, fairly significant ones. I think being able to plant your bike and then become a pedestrian in the district is certainly critical. But yes, to answer your question, you know, to me, in my mind, eight feet is certainly adequate to be able to maneuver a bike to get to your destination.
And would the six-foot amenity zone be, would that be a place where bicycle parking, you know,
Absolutely.
lockup parking would be available?
Yeah, and in fact, based on council's direction from the previous meeting, you were more in favor of the flexible option, which has less permanent landscaping and planner areas, so there'd be more opportunities to do things like that, bike corrals or bike racks.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
So I just have a couple comments. So I know as a part of the Bike Ped Master Plan, which we've done and we implement here and there, that 38th isn't shown as a east-west outlet as far as that plan goes for bicyclists, right?
Right, not proposed to have a bike lane.
Right, and I know, I'm just thinking of when we met with, I think, some of our highest cyclists in the community when we met with Wheat Ridge Cyclery and some of those folks, that their biggest, one of their biggest issues, or one of their biggest requests was more of the north-south outlet, that we need to provide more outlets to the side. the cyclists from a north-south direction. So, so I think that's important. And I guess I'm just thinking of 38th and I have a couple comments about it in general. But I just think that you hear, you know, you're, we're already hearing a lot of things, issues as far as congestion and parking and traffic and people getting used to things. And I, I just think, I question putting a, a bike route on 38th for that reason in itself. And I also do have to agree with Mr. Nealan, as he was saying earlier, that I don't think 38th Avenue is your spandex cyclist-riding street, like you see 32nd and those folks on their way out to the Golden. And so, so I, I do think, you know, again, from hearing some of the folks that do, I, I cycle on the, the green belt because I'm a wimp when it comes to streets and, and those kind of things. But I do think that they're more of a pub crawl type of, or I don't want to say pub crawl, but crawl, that they're going to a destination. I see a lot of bikes outside Colorado Plus in the summer. It was always neat to see them leaned up against that, that half-wall and those types of things. And I do think that most of our cyclists in our committee, our, our community do understand that 38th isn't their ideal route east-west, that it's more of one of the other ones identified. So I just, I just have that in, in mind. And then I think when we look at the other pictures, 38th, and I'm going to just bring this up, and I know it's not a part of this study session, and I don't want to be here all night. But I do think the other ultimate thing is, and I missed the other study session due to family issues, but I do think the ultimate question is, is I know we're looking at this section, but the elephant in the room is the rest of 38th as well, and where are we going with that? And so I, I just want to say that there's some other things that I think need to be discussed along with this, not tonight, but just in general, that is, you know, we can't just do four, four blocks and then wait another 20 years and do four more. I do think that landscaped from Harlan to Sheridan is nicely landscaped and I think does support a walkable community. There are sections between the sidewalk and the road that makes it easy. But I think with those things said, I, I think that the initial plans are, are good plans that I would support.
Ms. Wood?
First of all, I'd like to thank you and your staff for all the work you've done. I can tell you really put a lot of thought and research into it, so we appreciate your time. We appreciate your time. I, I wish the street was wider. I, I just wish we could accommodate everyone. When I look at the original plan and, and then these changes that you have proposed here, I just feel as, I like to bike and I'm also a big walker, and I feel like we really need the wider sidewalks as a destination for 38th Avenue. So I, I support the wider sidewalks. I like to bike. Personally, I think 38th Avenue is too busy and has too many cars for your average biker. And I would never take a family over there to bike along next to all the, the cars. And so I'm echoing what I feel some other people have said, that I believe the original plan is what would fit in this particular space. Again, I, I wish we could accommodate a wider six-foot bike lane and the amenities, but the wider sidewalk and the amenities are more important, I believe, for what we're trying to achieve as a destination spot. And I do support us looking into the wayfinding for the side streets and then to connect to 38th. And I believe that's the way we should probably look forward as far as making better connectivity with signage and asking the bikers to get off and walk once they get to the destination of, of the 38th Avenue. I don't also see it as a, as a place where people are going to use for bikes quite a bit. So I don't see it as a main thoroughfare for bikes. And we can use some of the other side areas for, for that kind of traffic. So I'm supporting the, the original plan.
Any additional comments?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Urban.
One specific question I have regarding the, the inclusion of bike zones or, or more elements between the gutter pans, does that come into play when we talk about the cost of the infrastructure beneath the street surface and having to regrade the dome of the road? And so we're, if we have more amen, not amenities, but if we have, if we have bike lanes and those types of things in the roadway that keeps the curbs further out and it reduces the likelihood of having to completely redo the entire roadbed? Or does that play?
It's, it's a good question. I, I don't think I have a good answer for you, just because I don't think we're at that point in terms of design and costing unless...
Mark Westbrook, Public Works Department. You know, there's a chance that it might save some, but until we get to the point where doing survey and actual design, we just won't know. And we've got some ideas, you know, we're only, we're looking for ideas to, to not have to regrade the entire street and rebuild the entire street. I don't know if that six-foot width, I don't think that's enough to completely save us from doing things. And it's just, it's hard to say at this point if, if that's going to do that for us or not.
Okay. And then another question I had was related to a concept called unmarked lanes, which is kind of a misnomer because it is an actual striped area, like a two-foot wide area for bikes on a roadway that wouldn't necessarily be a dedicated bike lane, but it would be a, it wouldn't necessarily be a sharo either. It would be a way to provide for a bike lane, but it would be a, a unmarked lane. Is that something to consider?
I still think we're just dealing with a very difficult practical aspect that, that everything takes up room.
Sure.
In, in reviewing the ASHTO guide today in, in preparation for the meeting, they talked about the physical bike itself is two and a half feet wide. And whenever you've got car doors and things like that next to you, it just really makes that problematic. I've never been doored, I believe is the official term for running into a door. My dad did when he was a kid back in the, in the, in the 40s. And I know, I know, I think you had a friend that got doored once and it was not, not pretty. So it's, you know, in, in looking through the ASHTO guide, even if you've got sharos or those, those sort of unmarked lanes and stuff, you're still looking at the same amount of real estate because you want to provide that safe area, that width available to, to sort of fit those people. I'm a pretty wide guy. I'm going to want to have some real estate to ride in. So especially up against parked cars is especially critical to have that. So it, it, it does become an issue. Sometimes I think people with those unmarked lanes are just, they're marking off a little piece of real estate. Sometimes you put those between the, the parallel parking and the, the travel lanes just to give the parallel parking guys a little room to open their door into. So it, and people might, might use those as bike lanes, but you still have the problem. It's just, it's not enough real estate to really safely convey bikes in a place where we're hoping to have lots of turnover with cars, with people coming and going and, and that kind of thing.
Okay. And then when you talk about the guidelines, couldn't it be that the, the planning zone or the amenity zone is the minimum of 48 inches? So that you're, you're talking about six feet here, but you can, the minimum is closer to 48 inches to sort of squeeze some of this in and be able to, to accommodate more things here? Because we talk, we look at here and it's sort of a, a judgment call, I guess, but it looks like when you talk about the amendment, the amenity zone being six feet, and then my last question is related to the gutter pan being two feet, is there a way to cut out part of the gutter pan and that amenity zone? Because those are above what the minimal requirements would be.
Well, the, the minimum requirement for the amenity zone in our Streetscape Design Manual is six feet. And that was determined based on, again, our parks folks' recommendations in terms of what's going to be viable for, for trees and for root growth. Now, in terms of the, the curb pan, I mean, I think a two-foot curb pan is a pretty standard dimension. I don't know if there's any way to skinny that up.
Again, we're, that, that two-foot curb pan, we, we try to have that wide enough to convey, and it's a steeper section, too. It's also at a 4% grade versus a 2% grade, is to try to convey the sort of, the everyday storm flows that we get, you know, the irrigation runoff. And when we get a little, a little sprinkle or something, the water stays in that concrete which, which holds up the water a lot better than asphalt does. So that's a lot of the reason for that two-foot pan is to give that room to convey that, that very minimal amount of water that we get from the everyday things. And then it just, it's, it's just harder to build concrete narrower and have it work when you've got cars and stuff running next to it and running over. You need a certain amount of mass there just to kind of get it all to hold together.
I'll repeat the thank yous for the, for the work and also think that what we asked at the last study session was, was carried out. You know, and I also appreciate the, this information. I'm going to come at it from a slightly different stance and it's really exactly what I said last time, so I'm, I'm just repeating and I apologize, but I'm repeating where I, what I felt last time. And that is that it's not so much about eight and six, although I think those are very important dimensions for, for what you've already stated. And I, and I agree with that, although I'm sure we could, we could talk about inches, but I agree with the, the reasons brought forward for the eight and six. But more importantly, I agree with the 14. Because in fact, what, what this is about, what this allows you in between those trees is that, the, the full width of, of this, of this pedestrian and amenity zone. And, and I think that that needs to be, you know, I would say that's a minimum, frankly, and it was said tonight, maybe with this intent, maybe not. But the idea that in some cases, wouldn't it be great if there was more than 14? And I, I, I would almost bet that there's some businesses who, in, in front of their place, if they could get more than 14, they would welcome that. If with a flexible design like one of the ones that's been mentioned, that the, that the opportunity to occupy that space, that 14, 15, 16-foot space allows for just incredible things to happen inside of it, whether it's bike reservoirs, whether it's, whether it's sit-down dining or cafes and other things. And so, yes, we're, we're, we are rightfully quibbling about inches and talking about bikes and talking about some other things. But I just want to kind of bring us back to, you know, why, you know, why I think it's important to set the, set the, the, the limit on, on carving out that space? Because I think we would be disappointed in some places, not exactly what's been brought up, but I think it's the same idea. Once we set this in, it's, I agree, it's going to, you know, when we set this in, it's going to be the way that it's going to be. And I, I would, the same argument about not, not wanting to be disappointed about what you are gaining or losing in bikes. I would say, let's look at that and say, let's not be disappointed about what we can get for the pedestrians and for the businesses and for the occupation of the, of the, of the sidewalk. Because that's what this is about. And it was mentioned before about placemaking. I think that's very, very relevant. So, you know, again, I, I, I certainly support and did support, when we talked about this last time, the, the importance of making sure that we're thinking about this hard and understand, and, and understanding bikes. And I have no intention that this is going to negate the importance of bikes to this corridor. And I think the, with a little bit more work, the last page of attachment number two of this document, really fleshing out some of the comments that came forward today about wayfinding and everything else, I think are really important to, to create that connectivity and loading people onto this corridor and putting them into those 14-foot minimum spaces.
Mr. Giutulio?
Well, I guess the question I have is, on Kipling Street for the bike lane, the bike path, we're acquiring property from residents who have less space than some of these businesses on 38th. But we've not even considered acquiring pieces of right-of-way on 38th Avenue from property owners. That, those pictures I passed out to you, when we did that, a lot of that property was acquired by, through, through the property owners. And we purchased that property for small amounts of dollars here and there to make the, make it work. And I guess my concern is, we haven't even looked at that as an option here. The, the, it was set that right-of-way acquisition wasn't going to be even considered in this on 38th Avenue. And I don't know why we don't look at it as an option. If, if you wanted to include bike lanes all the way from Sheridan to Wadsworth, and I, I know this isn't a east-west path for the hardcore bikers. They use 32nd Avenue and 35th. So why wouldn't you want to look at options, talking to property owners and say, do we buy some right-of-way to have the amenity zone? Especially if it's a restaurant or a, a bar or whatever, that they want to have that amenity zone in front of their property, they could actually, that's a way they could actually have that closer to their property, is if the city put that amenity zone closer to their property, widen it out, and then you had more options. I just think that once you've built this for $7 million, five and a half to $7 million, and then those options are all gone, they're gone. And I don't know how you're going to sell that to voters or anybody else when you keep cutting away some of the things that make it, make it nice, especially for a, a business like Wheat Ridge Cyclery that's there. So why don't, why don't we look at right-of-way acquisition and talk to some of the property owners and see if they'd be willing to give up some and change this around a little bit?
In, in the corridor planning process, you know, I think we, we looked at it very preliminarily as to whether we thought that would, you know, be realistic. And, you know, what we found is that as we start, you know, to look at physical improvements to the property, that, that taking right-of-way, particularly knowing that you're going to have to do it for several blocks consistently in order for that to be effective in terms of using that right-of-way and having a, a pretty consistent width and using it for public improvements, it just didn't seem like the, the impacts were going to be so sig, it seemed like the impacts were going to be so significant that it's something we took off the table, that, you know, people, there are buildings that are built right up to the street and there's definitely lots of parking that's built right up to the right-of-way. And a lot of those sites have very limited parking to begin with. So in the corridor planning process, we just made that decision as part of the design effort, that whatever we were going to be doing in terms of a street section was going to be an existing right-of-way.
So then I guess I have a question for council, is if this gets narrowed with curb gutter and sidewalk and you spend seven and a half million dollars, and then we have new developments coming in, and right now traffic is down, 3, 3,000 cars a day supposedly from Pierce West, what are you going to do when this starts backing up and then we have a bottleneck here? Are we going to tear it out again? I mean, do you think Colorado Plus and Rycos Pizza and those folks want to lose more drive-by traffic to, to their patios?
I don't think that's the discussion we're looking for.
It's my discussion, so let me ask it. I'm asking, for the future, for visionary future, is it, does it make sense to narrow this down and then not be able to go back without spending another $7 million in this section? Because we're, if we lose traffic with cars going to 38th and Wadsworth, people coming from Denver, what's the vision for this in 20 years from now? That's all I'm asking.
Okay, it, it seems to me, I don't know, do we have any more discussion on this? Or do we need, there's a, there's a question we need to answer, which is, do we want to go with the existing corridor plan or do we want to choo, choose one of the alternatives that, that are biking? And I think we need to get to down to that question first, but is there more comment on it?
Wheat Ridge Cyclers, Cyclery has been mentioned. How have they weighed in on this with you? I know there's been discussions with them, I'm just curious.
Right. You know, they, they've been very active, certainly on the leadership committee. They, they participated very actively in this most recent design effort that occurred in 2013, where we, where we had individual block-by-block meetings with property owners to solicit their input on the options that we presented this evening and back in December. You know, I think they searched, they, they struggled with, with this issue. I mean, I think they, they looked really hard at wanting to be able to have more of a dedicated or shared bike facility on 38th Avenue. They, they brought forward some proposals for how you could intermingle bikes and peds in some sort of a shared path. And we took a hard look at those and the context that they were, that they were presented from, because they were real projects, just were, were much more non-commercial oriented. So they were, they were contexts where you weren't going to have businesses and patios and that, that type of activity right on the sidewalk. So ultimately, you know, we kind of had that conversation with them and I don't know if they took any kind of end final position, but I think they understood that that, it was a really challenging thing to do on a corridor like 38th with limited room to do stuff.
I, I feel that the space is the issue. It's not whether we want to accommodate bicycles or not, because if we had the room, I think we would. The room isn't there and, and there are other alternatives that we can work with the bicycling community and do connectivity and assist them in that way. So it, I, I want to make clear that it's not that we don't want to work with bicyclists and we, it's not that we don't want to work with active living and alternate modes of transportation, because I think that's what Wheat Ridge is all about. We're about pedestrian walking, easier way to get around and alternate transportation. But there are ways to do that. And, and in this particular situation, if the room isn't there, if we can... And, and in this particular situation, if the room isn't there, if we can't accommodate it, then we have to look at our, our alternatives and, and what's best for the whole corridor.
Mr. Urban.
I, I appreciate what Councilman Wardens had to say about that. What I'm, what I'm more concerned about is this issue, as, as it was presented to me, at least as, as I understood it, part of the majority cost in, in this entire design is the need to sort of regrade or, or relative to the dome of the road. And that is impacted by the width of, from curb to curb. And by including bike lanes or other elements between the curbs, it reduces that likelihood of the cost of having to regrade the entire road. That, to me, is a, I think, an outstanding question as to what kind of impact does the width of the road have on the total cost of having to either go down to the road bed and build up from there? Or can we work with what we have existing and use some additional striping to reduce the total cost of this so that, as this is brought to the voters, that they are, don't have as high a sticker shock?
We, go ahead, George.
No, no.
What I was going to say is that Mr. Urban has brought up something that's different, that's entirely different from the, the rest of the conversation. What staff is looking for is, do we want to go with the original corridor? Or do we want to go with the, one of the, one or two alternates? So I need somebody to just, to make a motion, and then we will actually do a count, even though I usually prefer that we go with a consensus, but it doesn't sound like we're gonna have a consensus one direction. All right?
Go ahead.
Okay. I, I move that we show support for the original plan.
Amanda, our point of order, motions are not allowed at study sessions. Ask me by consensus.
It's a, it's consensus.
Yeah.
And this is also a non-binding.
Right. It is definitely a non-binding. Right.
Right. So we show consensus for the original plan.
So I'm going to take account as to whether we all agree with the original plan. Would that be fair? Do we need to do it by hands? One, two, three, four, five, six. Six would like to go with the original plan. And obviously, we have two who would not. That's correct? Would you like to raise your, okay?
I think we need another option.
More discussion?
So I, I, again, I, I do move, I don't move, I, because it's a study session. But I, I do agree with the original plan, but I do think that there is the ultimate question of the future vision of the entire street of 38th and the elephant in the room of the road diet and, and where we go with that. I know we're just looking at the one section, but I do think that a part of this, and, and I don't know, it could be another study session, or I can get a council member to work with me as far as putting on an agenda item. But I do think the other section of that is, you know, I don't want to just do one little section and then, oh, well, we'll talk about the other half when, when we have time or money or phase two. So I do agree with the plan as it initially started, but I do think that there's other things that need to be discussed going into kind of the vision of that street and, and how set it is in, in not being able to have a do-over. So I do think that that needs to be a long, hard discussion as well.
Did you want to speak, George?
No.
Okay. So it sounds like we're gonna go with that plan, but I'm also getting a sense that the council would like to have a little longer concept going forward versus just the corridor plans as it's presented, but more of a sense of where does it go from here? Is, is that the correct reading that I'm getting?
Well, if I can try to interpret what, what Christie is saying, is that obviously what we've done right now is, is built a consensus to move forward on a, on a, on a stretch that I, I would be hopeful is from Uppam to Newland. And I think once that stretch kind of takes the next form through design, it probably is prudent for us to look at the adjacent, the adjacent roadways and look back at the commercial neighborhood and Main Street road sections as they existed along the corridor and, and confirm our, the design intent and our consensus at that point moving forward. And we may find that there's, that there's some opportunities or, or things that we need to do. But I think that's contingent, and I'm putting words to this now, contingent upon us moving forward with this design effort from Uppam to Newland. Is that fair, Chris?
I guess one thing that I'd like to ask for, as this is going forward, I'd just reiterate this one more time, that I think that there is a, at least a benefit in studying whether or not the width of the roadway between both gutters will impact the overall cost of this entire project. So that if it's a 63, you know, whatever the total width between gutter and gutter is, if there's some break-even point or some point where it's more expensive or less expensive, that might give us a chance to look at the inclusion of bike lanes, and that's, I'll leave it at that. I just want to put that out there, and if that can be part of the design work, to consider that as to how to reduce the overall cost of this. Because frankly, I think it's, it's difficult to justify the cost of this with the current or projected sales tax revenue on the corridor, so.
Okay. The, the council thus has agreed on the corridor plan as it, as we have it now, correct?
Originally.
Originally. Mr. Urban, are you offering, therefore, if we do not accept it the way it is, if we change the, the gutters or change the width, we are, we are saying we do not accept the corridor the way it is now? Am I, am I reading that correctly? That, that you're saying you want another study?
No, it's just.
Consider. Consider.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, right.
Cost factor.
It's just when it gets to engineering. I mean, you can't notice until you get to engineering, so, I mean, when it gets to that point, you would like it to be looked at.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, obviously, when it's engineered, we'll look at the, the cheapest possible reconstruction.
So that's a possibility, then?
Yeah. We'll definitely be looking at the cheapest possible reconstruction. Yeah. About Ken?
Let me just add to that, because I think if I understand Mr. Urban's suggestion and Mark's response is that there is a potential that you could have some cost savings, but the, potentially, I mean, it's a, it's a big question, because we haven't done the design work to, to be able to understand that. But it would, what would come with that is moving the, keeping the curb further out. So that would be at the expense of landscaping amenities and sidewalks. So it's, it, it may indeed be a cost savings, but it's a different section.
Yeah.
Okay. So if, as we go into final design, I don't think we're, I mean, if the direction is, and, you know, after, as we keep, you know, moving along on this process to move forward with the section that we're talking about tonight, I don't think you'd go into the engineering effort and say, oh, and we're gonna, we're gonna look at how you move the curbs to save money, because that would be a different section than what we're designing to. So I think the decision point on that is really tonight.
I think that's what I was trying to point out, that if we are going to get to the point where we say, first of all, we, we accept the original design, the original corridor design, and then say, but let's think about what it would cost if we, we, we pulled the curbs back out, we are not therefore accepting the original design.
Correct.
That's my point.
Yes.
And is council comfortable with that, that we are going to leave that still as a tentative place depending upon the, the further cost? No. Am I making myself clear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
If the, if the purpose is to find the least expensive way to, to finish the road, then they will, as, it's a certainty that they will look for the cheapest way to do it. But I think what they're saying is, it would require an entire new design, a whole new concept. So therefore, we've already voiced a consensus for the original plan. So, you know?
That's my point.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we clear now?
Yeah, we'll, we'll move forward with, based on the consensus tonight, on the original design, a mixture of the fixed and, and flexible design work. And obviously, engineer it to the cheapest possible. Our next steps are to bring it back to the February 10th regular meeting for a contract approval with Intellicy, who did the original design. And I think we're looking, we got some estimates, I think, to do it all the way to Newland or Marshall. Is it up here? Oh, yeah. So, yeah, so 40, in the 40, 41-ish thousand, 42,000, to do the final design work all the way to Newland.
I think along with that, we're also looking to see some sort of a concept of the entire street. Wouldn't that be correct?
Well, that would be a, an additional scope.
That would be an additional thing.
I, I think what I heard is that, that will be part of the discussion with council as this moves forward, but not as, not with this contract scope.
At this point?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. DeTulio.
So Patrick, if that's, contract is approved on the February 10th, you said?
Yes.
So what, what timeframe are we looking at to go through this process of design? And then, six months, seven months?
I think Ken or Mark can probably address that.
With the, the schedule that Intellicy's proposed and that we had put together, we would, we would authorize them to proceed on February 10th, should the vote go that way. And with the additional work to go from Pierce to Newland, which is a question that we have for you tonight, then that bounces us out to, coming back to you, I think it's the end of June or early July to a council meeting to present that final conceptual design. Very similar presentation what we did before, just a little more refined, a little more detailed, and then, and then honing in on that kit of parts and honing in on that, what that flexible design really looks like. And so the, the addition of that Pierce to Newland adds, I think it's only two or three weeks of additional effort to it. They think they can, they can get that part of it caught up and, and, and jump right in with that. And so we're looking, I, I believe it's in June or July timeframe. We can certainly report back in February, we can have those dates for you.
Okay. So, sorry, I'm almost done. So that's another six, seven months. And so when we talked about getting rid of the backend parking temporarily, I mentioned it could take six months to a year. So why don't we benefit some of the residents and businesses who've asked for it and just put that back to a parallel parking or something different in the meantime as part of this design when you're working on, so that we're not dealing with that controversy for the next year? And that was mentioned to do that, since by a few members of council, that they were gonna talk about it tonight.
Did I, did I hear you say that you want an additional consensus from us on Pierce to Newland tonight? Is that?
Ideally. I mean, I think our intent would be to bring forward the contract based on the previous consensus in December. If there's been no change to that, then we'll bring forward a contract for $41,000 with, that takes it out to Newland slash Marshall.
So a consensus is not needed at this point?
No.
Okay. We're good.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I want to answer that, because I, I'm, I don't feel like that we need to talk about it tonight. I, I think that February 10th is probably a reasonable day, because I think we'll see the scope and that, that'll solidify some of the, some of the schedule, I assume, when we see that scope and that contract on, on the 10th. So we'll have a better picture on, on the 10th and maybe some time between now and the 10th to have some conversations with folks and, and figure out what's the best way moving forward. So I stand by the fact that I think we should talk about it. But I think understanding what the, what the real scope is on the 10th is, when we have the contract, would be the best time to talk about it.
And who are you planning to talk to? Because the consensus failed to talk to anybody. The, the motion failed to talk to business owners or staff to look at it. So.
You were supposed to talk to business owners.
No, that, that motion failed.
Everything failed.
So staff wants direction on that. They're not gonna go out and do it unless they get a direction.
Yeah. So I, I'm just saying, I'm willing to talk about it on February 10th.
But how are you gonna, George, how are you gonna talk about it on February 10th when you don't have the information? The, the consensus to move forward with talking about it and staff researching that information failed. There's no information to look at.
No, I understand that. I'm, I'm talking about that, that consensus. That's what I'm talking about. So I get it.
Do I understand that at that point, we would discuss that as far as, as a possible consensus point? We're good. All right. Do you have what you need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
We are done. Wait, do we have anything else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. We're good. Let's do it another time. Good. Thank you.